Okay, welcome everybody. I guess we'll get underway with our meeting for November the 3rd, 2020. Everybody's had a chance to look over the agenda. If everybody's comfortable with that, I'll move forward with a motion on the agenda. By Council Nadeau. Second by Council Pado. Be resolved, the Council of Town Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for November 3rd, 2020, all in favor? Carry on. Okay, and also the minutes, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Everybody's comfortable with the minutes, there's no errors, there's no omissions. I'll move forward with a motion on that. Moved by Council Costecheck. Second by Council Parry. Be resolved, Council of Town Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held October 20th, 2020, as circulated, all in favor? Carry it. Okay, we're into council reports. I'm not sure if anybody has a council report tonight. Whoa, okay, I'll start with Council Nadeau.
Okay, I've got a quick one. So on October 28th, and we were supposed to meet on October 27th also for a special meeting, the WMRL Library Board, we met, and unfortunately, our new prospective member opted out this year due to some public health issues with what's going on with COVID. But we're still recruiting our neighboring municipalities to build our board bigger and stronger. Lots of strategic planning going on behind the scenes as we continue moving forward to keep improving our services for residents. Also, on October 22nd, there was another Justice, Bruce Plains Justice Committee meeting, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that meeting due to COVID again, as I wasn't feeling well, I had to stay home and isolate, and I went and got tested, and I was negative. So I did my part there, so for four days, I was stuck at home. But I know they continue to meet without me, and again, they're doing that service to help support with reconciliation and help support taking away some of the pressure off our justice and supporting our local residents in our region, so.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions, any comments? Okay, Council Costecheck, I see your hand.
On October 26th, the Niqwa District Disabled Persons Association, we had a meeting regarding the Handy Van. As of September 2020, the trips were 2,481. 2019, as of September, they were 9,727. So they are down an average of 7,300 trips up to September, and that is mostly because of COVID, is what they're suggesting. They did have some donations, Boston Pizza donated $250, De Beautiful Plains Community Foundation donated $1,000. The Christmas Dinner raised $250, they got an MPI rebate on the van for $546, and the Hand organization gave a donation of $1,500 just recently, so it's really nice that they were getting these donations and stuff to try and help them out a little bit. However, due to all of that, they have a projection by the end of the year of a loss of $25,000, which is a huge amount of money. I had suggested, others had suggested possible fundraisers, you know, doing anything to get donations from different businesses, you know, it's a very big thing to have and to keep going, but they can't run out of the deficit, so they're definitely trying to look at ways to raise money. I'm not sure, I guess next maybe I have just suggested any type of fundraiser. Nobody has ever really planned anything, but maybe we'll give them a little go ahead to do so. We also discussed the Handy Van operating during the flu clinics. Because the flu clinics run until 7:00 PM, the Handy Van normally stops at 5:00, and it is double the rate usually after 5:00, but because of flu clinics, they are going to run at a regular cost even after hours. The November 12th, 9 to 7, November 13th, 9 to 7, November 27th, 9 to 7, and they will operate on the Saturday, the 28th of November, from 9 till 7:00, and those are at regular rates, but you do have to call and make sure you coordinate your Handy Van trip with your appointed time, because you have to have an appointment for your flu shot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or any comments on, right, I guess, so they're down about 7,000 trips?
They're down.
And they're about $4 per trip?
Four, yeah, I think they've reached to four.
Yeah.
So is there a chance that the town could provide a set of books on that?
I think it would be something that we should look at, seeing exactly how, what their, like an audit type, where their incomes are coming in, where their expenses are, just to see how we can.
Well, and how the organization is running would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, because it is something you want to keep continuing, it's just, I think they need a little bit of help right now to just get it out.
All right, okay. Yeah, no, the COVID world's obviously changed, everybody's bottom line, so that's something that definitely could be. Okay, anybody else? Council Parry, oh, definitely, Mary. Murray?
Okay, so the Farm and Leisure Lottery Draw was held this weekend. It's interesting to note that the $500 cash winners spread over a very huge area, Ben Starks, Winnipeg Beach, Oakburn, Caribou, Altonstone, Hatticoppa from Niqwa and Menadosa, the $1,000 cash winners, Valley River, Boise, Shoal Lake, Forest of Prairie Burden, and the $100,000 winner, Ashton Court and Dennis Tiller of Niqwa. And early results, oh yeah, 50-50 draw was Joyce Mott, and she won $57,555. And early indications are that we did very well this year, there was no set amount, but we do know that we surpassed last year.
All good.
So it's a very good year, and I really appreciate all the work that Mary Ellen Clark and the Medical Clinic Committee and all the volunteers who helped with the lottery, because it is definitely keeping our clinic alive and well, which we need in this community. Yesterday, I was on a meeting that stretched from Forest LeFerry all the way to Prince Rupert, we had, or Prince something out there in DC, at the very end of the Yellowhead Highway. So this is the Trans Canada Yellowhead Highway Association, so we have representatives from all across the provinces, and the meeting was called Unstoppable Conversations, where we were dealing with issues throughout the communities, and how we were being affected by COVID, and because Highway 16 goes through or around communities, everybody's being affected, whether people are no longer stopping or stopping from COVID. And the one they take home from the whole thing is that all communities need to start producing positive influence generators in every way they can, in all their service groups, in their Facebook accounts, in all their meetings, and especially the coffee shops. Positive influence generators, people talking positively about things and how to make things better, not to attack and belittle innocent people who may or may not have contacted COVID-19 easily or hardly or innocently, but the idea is not to attack, but to help out and promote healthy health and wellness, so that someone who does feel that they might need to be tested, such as wonderful Mr. Counselor Jason Nadeau, gets tested without worrying about everybody else condemning them to death, and that is one of the worst things that could happen. So we need positive influence generators throughout our whole system. That's probably enough.
Yeah, no, it's a good message, thank you, Council Parry. Anybody else present a council report? Captain Mary Heather.
Yeah, our Hand Board, we had a meeting on October 23rd, and so through the process, Lifelines is still a big and important part, and they have 15 individuals, so over the last period. An interesting note was the community meal program. From January of 2019 to September of 2019, they prepared 4,350 meals, and then January of 2020 to September of 2020, they prepared and it was mostly picked up 4,337 meals, so just basically similar to last year, so. So I kind of thought through COVID, things would change there, but it was nice to see that a lot of people were helping, a lot of seniors and that were picking up meals for them, and so that might be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Okay, anybody else? Council Pado.
I think everyone else is open, I guarantee. Public skating was off to a really good start back in the middle of October, but unfortunately, with our region going to orange, we're postponing it until further notice, as soon as we can get back to the yellow zone, we'll be up and running once again. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Was there much else effective besides public skating?
Well, there's definitely been a change of some of the protocols that we're following at the Yellowhead Center, definitely masks are being required for anyone entering in, and once they're sitting down, they can take their masks off, but then they're required to be keeping them on again once they're moving around throughout. And I know some of the maximum numbers have changed as well, too. Now that we're at 25% at the Yellowhead, they're allowed, including the foyer area, there are 284, I believe, is their maximum. So it's a little bit of a change for the next little one.
Council Parry.
So with that, one caution I would have, is those 284 people aren't clustered together, that they're actually socially distancing and apart, and with the Public Health Inspector visiting our sites and shall be continuing to visit our sites, we want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and making everyone aware around us that we still need to socially distance, we need to respect the public health guidelines, because we need to keep all our facilities open, because that is one of the few things we still have going for us in this COVID environment. So it's a very important thing that we stop the old cluster around thing, including change rooms, you know, like 24 people in a change room, that's too many in a change room. We need to really start thinking outside the box, using two change rooms for one team would be a very difficult. You know, and in my own world of seniors, being a senior, we seem to think that because we're seniors, we're safe from each other, but I have contacts with younger people, my family and all that, and so when I see my parents, I'll be wearing our masks. We have to protect everybody from ourselves and ourselves from everybody, and still have a society. Another firm speech.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? I know it's tricky, right? There's just so many rules, and the rules are changing all the time, and now that we're in code orange, it's a moving target, right? So it's just difficult for everybody to get a handle on what the proper procedure is. So as you say, win and don't, just follow the basic rules, right? Social distancing, wash your hands, yeah. Okay, I think that's it for our council reports, I think everybody had one, it's pretty exciting. Okay, moving on, we are into the RCMP Coroner Report. I don't think, does anybody call in?
This is more of a narrative report, the other ones you received are very statistical and hard to report on. So looking at the period of time, July 1st to September 30th of this year, they note that no hair drivers were charged within the town in this quarter, I'm thinking because nobody's going anywhere, probably a big part of that. 880 traffic tickets have been written in the Niqwa area in the past quarter, of which 69 were written warnings, one ticket was issued under the Liquor Control Act, and six cellphone tickets were issued. As the new school season has started, members are actively patrolling both school areas during the drop off and pickup times to ensure drivers are operating safely and within speed limits. Six fraud complaints were reported in Niqwa during the past quarter, however, none of the complainants were seniors. Two complaints provided information about their social insurance numbers to defrasters, while another complaint did not. Two people were victims of fraud from an online buy and sell group. One employee at a business provided payment to defrasters alleging to be from Western Union, so the advice is if anybody's asking you once again for your personal information or anything that sounds suspicious, just don't have it out and don't give it over phones or electronically or otherwise. It would be better to just be confirmed if it is legitimate, call them back, call your visa provider, call your DPO provider, if they did actually make the call to you. Out of 20 property crimes reported during this time period, six break and enter deaths were reported, four were to local businesses with no suspects identified, while two may have involved a former employee of a business. They're continuing with curfew checks for those that are under those restrictions in the community. Speaking more specifically just to Niqwa, 64 traffic tickets and 24 written warnings were written within the town. Due to extensive flooding, they opened on July 1st, the members assisted in keeping the public away from sites where the equipment was operating, they provided immense support for the town as well as we did our operations, and they also did 24 hour offers for a brief period of time to make sure, you know, things were looked after. Members have been required to complete six COVID-19 checks on persons in Niqwa who have traveled and are required to self-isolate for 14 days. The citizens must present themselves at a window holding a piece of picture ID and are spoken to through the door about compliance. No complaints of non-compliance have been received during this time period. Updating information for the state school programs, so that they're aware of the setup and evacuation needs of each school and the event emergencies, and Niqwa Cup Program held in person meeting on September 23rd, which was attended by Councilor of their co-flead liaison, Mayor. Sergeant Colby Argu has commenced duties as the area commander in charge of Bruce Plains Area covering Niqwa and Menadosa Detachments since September 21st. Two provincial members, one assigned to Niqwa and one assigned to Menadosa, have been transferred and not yet being replaced. We have not received any information as to when a replacement member may be coming. RCMP DEPO was shut down for some time due to COVID-19, and they're slowly starting up again, but with fewer troops passing through. Future planning, COVID-19 pandemic continues to impact how policing is carried out in all communities. Members have been required to make some changes on how their daily work is conducted. Safety is foremost in all public interactions, and protective equipment must be ordered in some situations. The front door of the detachment does remain locked, however, requests for administrative services such as criminal record checks and fingerprints for essential services continue to increase. For criminal record checks, the first contact with client professing these services, by phone, then email, requires us to see the client, only once a person can make up their computer forms. That's the report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, City of Brandon, 911 Service Agreement.
So this is just a letter advising us that our 911 Services Agreement Schedule 8, that comes out every year, and telling us what our fees are going to be for 2020. So just to give you a comparison, there's going to be a 13 cent increase per capita, we're going from $4.47 to $4.60. So what does that mean on the whole? We paid last year, or this year, $20,602, and we're actually going to pay $21,201. And I'm going to expect next year with a census, this number is going to actually increase significantly, because even though we're based on 4609 right now, as we all talk, we recognize that's not our number, it hasn't been for a while.
Get ready about that. Minister of Municipal Relations.
So this was a kind of a welcome letter as well, we received, this speaks to restart programming for funding that's coming available for municipalities in the province of Manitoba. This is an update on funding that will assist with economic recovery in light of the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. The Manitoba government has provided $500 million in, as part of a stimulus package to help restart Manitoba's economy. This includes $230 million in funding for Manitoba's contributions to the investing in Canada infrastructure program. Manitoba has invested, prioritized those projects through government of Canada for approval, and just so that everybody knows, we actually have projects in there, they've been sitting in the queue now for a lengthy time, and we're waiting on approval. Once those projects are approved at the federal level, Manitoba is prepared to advance provincial funds to municipal partners to allow planning and construction to commence without delay. So everybody knows right now, we have a Trentmark application in there, and we also have Phase 2 Lagoon application in there. The Manitoba Restart Program also includes an additional $50 million to be provided in 2020, 21 and 21, 22 for water and wastewater projects. This is in addition to the annual base budget for Manitoba Water Service Board grants. A total of $41.1 million of this funding will be provided to municipalities, with the remaining $8.9 million allocated to parks for water and sewer projects. And they've reached out to municipalities who are receiving this funding, and of course, Niqwa was fortunate enough to get $2.25 million for a $4.5 million project to construct a water reservoir. Under the federal Safe Restart Funding, Manitoba has reached an agreement with the federal government on the allocation of its share of the $19 million provided to provinces and territories under the Safe Restart Agreement. Manitoba's share of the Safe Restart Funding will include $72.6 million in operating costs for all municipalities and $33 million for public transit support for municipalities with public transit systems. The $72.6 million in municipal operating funding will be distributed to municipalities on a per capita basis. This means that municipalities outside of Winnipeg will receive approximately $32.7 million in operating funding. Operating funding will be released to municipality in the coming days, and for Niqwa, this amounts to $275,939.70, or very nearly $60 per capita. Manitoba is committed to matching federal funding to municipalities and has made a number of contributions. In addition to the $280 million within the Manitoba Restart Funding outlined above, Manitoba did advance 75% of unconditional municipal operating basket funding in spring to the share of the remainder in September, and committed to additional funding of $45 million in disaster prevention funding and $5 million for fire protection grants. And we're currently at our protection committee, kind of discussing putting forth the grants, we have our deadline on Friday for various things that we could certainly utilize at our fire department to, you know, increase our service levels and make sure we have safe fire. So we're trying our every avenue we can to save some of the cash, because I guess in summary, I've got that there.
Good to know. Any questions, any comments? Okay, thank you, colleague. Okay, we'll move on to finance. Okay, we'll pay for bills in October, and we'll need a motion moving forward on that. Moved by Council Druck. Second by, Captain Mary Heather. Be resolved, have we approved accounts for October 2020 totaling $2,486,103 as reviewed and representing checks, 202002069 to 202002313, but excluding check number 202002167 and 202002292. All in favor? Carry it. Yeah, Captain Druck is choosing themselves for conflict, will move on to pay a home hardware and quad bill. So I will need a motion. Moved by Counselor Pado. Second by Council Costecheck. Be resolved, have we approved check number 202002167 and 2020022292 for October 2020 to home hardware and Niqwa Blast on Quad, totaling $6,935.09. All in favor? Carry it. Moving on to new business, our snow removal agreement, colleague.
So this is an annual item we look at on your agenda, we have a agreement with government of Manitoba, as represented by Manitoba's Land Construction, for the clearing of the Ploughlin, Wainroy, Logan, and Pauling of Snow on Mountain Avenue, basically the provincial trunk Highway 16 West to Connaught Street. And they're suggesting that the agreement, they will pay us the same loans last year, it's $9,317.41, and that's been in place, I think, for a while.
Yeah, it hasn't been a lot of years recently.
Yeah, I don't see a few increasing here, that's all I'm saying.
Unfortunately. Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward, we're all going to agree with that, we'll move forward with resolution. Moved by Council Parry. Second by Council Nadeau. Be resolved, have we authorized the CEO to sign the 2020-21 snow removal agreement with Manitoba Infrastructure? All in favor? Carry it. Okay, we are Airport Farming Agreement, colleague.
So this is also something that's come to the table with council a few times, we, whether it's a three term or a five term, this one's specific to five, we own land basically out in the airport direction, it's called the Airport Farm Agreement. What the town decided to do a number of years ago is to lease that land to basically two partners, it would be the Yellowhead Center and the current fund people, and they use that land to, as a fundraiser. So all, you know, the equipment gets donated, various things, the inputs come in, and they have a system to actually harvest the crops, and using the proceeds of the crops as a fundraiser for their associations. So it's 307 acres, and the rent is $20 an acre, so we get $6,140 a year, and we're proposing another five-year term, January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025.
Just, I know that acreage isn't correct, 307.
Is something removed up there?
Oh, it's, it's more acres than that. Now, I don't know, because is there a separate agreement that was signed to the, an additional piece was put on to the farming project that previously was rented to the Hawkins? So there was two separate pieces rented at that time. I know currently we're renting, I know currently that project rents, the existing area, it wasn't that 307, but there was another 40-some acres added when the Hawkins removed themselves from that rental of that property.
I can look at that, I know the parts are listed here, but there's also, there's also a piece, there's 25 acres of land, Wes Johnson is excluding, there as well. You know what, we'll check that, so as long as you're okay with continuing the agreement, we'll just make sure we have the right acres.
And we probably use that money to pay our taxes to Northside Slum Park.
Okay. Could be right. That is correct. Council Parry, those funds are not for the maintenance leader or there to pay property taxes.
Right, yeah.
Okay, there we go, thank you. Okay, everybody else is comfortable with this resolution, we'll move forward. Moved by Council Costecheck. Second by Council Pado. Be resolved, have we authorized the mayor and CEO to renew the Airport Farming Agreement with the Yellowhead Farming Committee for the term January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025. All in favor? Carry it. Okay, and we're into approving some policies, 2020-201, colleague.
So in order to answer policies, again here, these are two new policies, the first one is AD100 Accessible Employment. Just very quickly, enacted May 1st, 2019, the province passed the Accessible Employment Standard Regulation, making accessibility a regular part of recruiting, hiring, and supporting employees who experience workplace barriers. The standard will help Manitobos with disabilities participate in the labor force and the economy, and help employers find untapped and reliable staff. To meet the criteria of the regulation, the town is required to firstly create emergency response information to help employees with disabilities stay safe during emergencies, and this actually should be in place already, but because of COVID, there was a delay, so that's part of the package. And also to ask employees who require assistance during emergency for permission to share information with individuals who agree to help. So if something happened, somebody got hurt or something, we knew, you know, they had a disability of some sort, we can share that with emergency responders or doctors or whatever it is. And the second part, which it doesn't really need to be in place till May of 2021, but we're going to get ahead of the game, we just play then, we predict to it, Jody's actually created an accessible employment policy, which will set out managers' policies.
Jody's actually created an assessable employment policy, which will set out measures, policies, and practices to provide reasonable accommodations for existing employees, remove barriers at the front end of any recruitment and selection process, and to follow through with reasonable accommodation, development, training, and alignment with accessibility standards. This is mandated by the province, policies in front of employees in all departments. Once this is passed, we'll be aware of the policy and give them the opportunity to discuss and comment on any need they may have for assistance should an emergency occur. The second part of that is AD 105, professional development and training. Over the years, we have spoken about creating a policy that would align training needs in the town of Niqwa amongst all of the employees, and not, it doesn't really matter what department, setting what is professional development, what is just regular training, what is requirements for keeping your memberships and associations. So we've created a new policy, and it will assist employees to access career-related training where there is a demonstrated mutual benefit. It sets up the town's commitment to investing in employees by fostering environmental learning, self-development, personal growth, and ensuring safety in the workplace. The policy also sets up expectations related to balancing the associate, cost of training, and investment in employees against employee deprivation. So I actually prioritize me and these all copies, and if there are any questions or concerns, I'm not sure if you have any tonight, but we're asking for your support in passing those policies.
Any questions, any comments? I think we're all pretty comfortable with what was put forward. So we will move forward with our resolution then. Move by, Councilor Barrett, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved, if we, the council town of Niqwa, approve the following policies, AD-10100, assessable employment, AD 105, professional development and training. All in favor? Here it is. Okay, I think we're down to the business. Anything, I know we touched on a few things tonight, I don't know, does anybody want to add anything, or talk about anything new? Are, we're pretty good, go. Councilor Barrett.
Well, we have people coming on Highway 16, on Highway 8 coming into Niqwa. We want all people to feel very welcome. We want our business people to feel that they're able to welcome them. Is there a possibility that, because of we're, you know, going from yellow to orange, you know, back and forth, is there a possibility that we can have some form of respective wording be placed in the bottom of our signs coming to town, that we welcome people to our town, you know, we welcome them to wear masks, to respect their safety and the safety of all our upwards? Or kind of...
Something we could consider, obviously. Okay.
I think we're actually already thinking about that, but the week of giving is on one of the signs right now, until the week of giving is concluded, we will have, I think, the places.
Like the marquee lips on the bar.
Sorry about, sorry about that.
Anybody else?
Are there questions that councils would like to be put forth for the ministerial forum coming up for the AM convention? Like, we, we have all the ministers from the province, they'll be there, we must present our questions ahead of time, and if they're presented ahead of time, the ministers will then be able to respond to them during the convention itself. So if any councilors have questions and/or desires, you know, I've written two down here that I'll pass on to our mayor, this is our opportunity to get in ahead of the game.
And that's to be done by November 13?
November 13th, yes.
Okay. Okay, good to know. Good. Anything else? Okay, I guess that's it for tonight. We'll move forward with the engagement. Move by. Councilor Costincheck, seconded by Councilor Padilla. Sorry about that. Be resolved, the council town of Niqwa, do not turn, ready to be a council at 7:40. All in favor?
Good luck with your escape.